I'm going to call to order the Tuesday, June 18th, 2019, a meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I would ask everyone to please bow your head in a moment of silent prayer and reflection. And keep in your prayers the children that were injured in an accident this afternoon down Garner Bagno in some serious condition.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the life line of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Jones, if you would please review any adjustments to the agenda?
Thank you, Chairman Mallory. We have two adjustments, and they are both under new business. It's the addition of the amended budget ordinance and the addition of a report from Commissioner McNeely.
Any additional adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as adjusted?
No movement, Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Norman. All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, like, sign. Motion carries unanimously. This time, we'll move to a presentation of the American Heart Association Mission 2019, Lifeline Gold Plus Award to our Iredell County Emergency Medical Services. I believe Amy Craver from Wake Forest Baptist Medical Center is here in addition to...
Can you hear me here? Not much. Okay. I'm really excited to be here again. On the way here, I was thinking, you know, it's kind of like you're going to celebrate a birthday or a anniversary. It's just a yearly thing, so congratulations. Our EMS is once again able to receive the American Heart Association's Mission Lifeline Gold Plus Award. This award is a result of detailed, minute-by-minute analysis of 660 patient records from 2018. The Gold Plus Award is the highest level of recognition offered by the AHA. In 2016, our Iredell EMS received a Silver Plus, which is the highest level for first-time applicants. In 2017, we received Gold Plus. In 2018, Gold Plus. So for patients experiencing symptoms of a heart attack, every single type of illness, we often say at the care of these patients, "Tonnus muscle." So you save a ton of patients. Our attack can be quickly identified, quickly retrieved, and quickly transported to a PC ambulance, which is a center of capable open access for any emergency. Mission Lifeline is how it's cut out. Each step of this process occurs. It shows us where we can improve, and people get that feedback, and continuously improve upon it. Excellent care at either hospital, ECOM, responders, EMS, and the hospital. Work is one chain in the length of survival. We are so proud to highlight that team working this year with work. ECOM identifies the symptoms of a heart attack during the initial model, one call, and starts the patients to take an aspirin to improve blood flow to the heart. First responders, when they arrive on scene, will inspect blood flow to help reduce their oxygen and other medication. EMS will then place a patient on a cardiac monitor and identify which part of the heart determines. Allow the EMS to take leaders or implement to that particular patient. They all go through a daily review of the hospital, who becomes either a party by categorization which is within the pipeline, or a doser medication which is called a direct source of blood flow to the heart. So it is my honor to get to work with you every day and to have seen... I've been with you guys from the first day of this award, so to see the growth and continued care of Iredell County EMS makes... I have to stay proud. It's like a proud home in the US. So seeing you guys every single step of the way, improve the care for the patients in this county is absolutely astounding. So it is with greatest pleasure that I present Iredell County EMS with the Mission Lifeline AHA Gold Plus Award for the part of our action care.
Come over in the center, and we can get behind you. Great job. Thank you. It's always great to have the frequent accolades that we articulate from time to time for our first responders in all of our agencies and our EMS. It's great to have those accolades validated by another third party that's looking at metrics across the board, and so just shows you that our comments aren't just home cooking. They're backed up by metrics. So, thank you again, and please pass on, Blair, our congratulations to your whole team. Okay, at this time, item 6.1, we have a presentation of a resolution in support of the Iredell County Fairgrounds remaining in the town of Troutman corporate limits. And Mr. T. Ross Young, the mayor of Troutman, is here together with several of the town board, and we just welcome you to our Tuesday regular meeting.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to share with you all this resolution. I'll try to quickly cover it. I know you all have it in your packets, but clearly, you can tell from the supportive council here, we're missing one of our members, but clearly would have also been here tonight if she could. So quickly, Resolution 0619, Resolution in Support of Iredell County Fairgrounds Remaining in the Corporate Limits of Troutman. Whereas the property at 630 North Main has been owned by Iredell County since 1919, and the town of Troutman recognizes Iredell County as a valued partner. It endeavors within the local community. And whereas the Iredell County Agricultural Fair has been held at 630 North Main for 83 years, and whereas the property is home to various events that are held by organizations within Troutman, including the town and in Iredell County and beyond, and whereas the town of Troutman recognizes the benefit of such a property and event space where there are corporate limits and the revenue and visitors that it brings, and whereas the town desires to have a vested interest in the future of 630 North Main Street as a multipurpose venue and focal point of heavily traveled commercial corridor, and that interest ranging from non-monetary to monetary support. Now therefore, it be resolved that the town of Troutman does hereby formally express its desire to keep the Iredell County Fairgrounds within the corporate limits of Troutman, and that was adopted on the 10th of June. In summary, I would say clearly, we understand that this property has a higher and tremendous use for our county, and we would love to see it remain within the corporate limits of Troutman. We appreciate the support you all have given us in the past and look forward to opportunities where we can envision a property where it can be of more valuable use to the county and to the residents of Troutman and, as I said, residents of the county. Again, I'll ask any of my council members if they would like to comment as well, or open any questions.
Well, having been on this from the start, the first initial meeting and so forth, and the suggestion that we appear before you tonight in support of this resolution, I just want to simply say that a partnership with the county is a wonderful, good thing. It's a win-win, and for the benefit of what's known as Iredell County Fairgrounds at this time to improve and enhance over the upcoming years in partnership to make it a much better piece of property. It's already a wonderful piece of property, to make it even much better, to expand it not only from a recreational standpoint, but an educational standpoint as well, to provide situations where children can come and adults can come and learn from displays and exhibits, as well as entertainment venues. And we look forward to that. Again, not to overuse the term "win-win," I see that as enhancement for the county as well as the town of Troutman, and I look forward to do this and many more partnerships with the county to enhance a better county for all of us. Thank you.
I would just like to say, as a lifelong residence of Iredell County and of Troutman, that the Iredell County Fairgrounds has been there all my life, and I would like to continue to sit there, to represent the county, and I feel like it is in a good central location for all of Iredell County residents, and anything that I feel like the town could do, we will certainly do our best to try to help you. Thank you.
Just a quick comment, because they've pretty much covered the gamut here tonight, but Chairman Mallory and to all of the Commissioners, I wanted to give a personal thanks for you and each of you reaching out and opening this line of conversation. I particularly want to extend a thank you to Commissioner McNeely, to County Manager Jones, to the Register of Deeds, Mr. Wyatt, and Parks and Recreation Director Halper for bringing forth and continuing that conversation with our leadership so that we better understood where we stand, what has transpired in the past, and what we need to look forward to in the future. And that's a wonderful thing, to have an open line of communication, and I fully expect that that line of communication will continue to be open as we go forward in this endeavor. As Sally said, the Fairgrounds has been in our town her entire life. As the mayor said, and I'll reinforce, it's been activities going down and therefore 83 years. The fairground is one of the pillars of our community, and culturally and from a historical perspective, it is recognized and is very, very important to our town as well as the county, of course, but our town as well. And we are very supportive of continuing that relationship, not just for another five years, 10 years, 50 years, but another 100 years. Why not? Because it's a good thing for Troutman, it's been a good thing for Iredell, it is centrally located, which makes it great for the extended citizenry throughout our county, and we look forward to partnering in those ways that we can to make it a gleaming jewel again, shine it up, and make it a place that we all are proud of and want to go and participate in, a destination that drives our... the quality of life for our residents as well as our commercial opportunities. So thank you for that, and we intend and want it to stay one of the four jewels in our community. Thank you.
We really appreciate your presentation of the resolution. I'd open the floor to any Commissioners that would like to make any remarks. I'll close things up.
I'd just like to say, I appreciate y'all coming out, and I appreciate the resolution. And we talked about it in our... some of our meetings we've had, and I said, I think it would be good to go on record and make it stand that the fair needs to stay where it's at, and it needs to be more than just the fair.
Absolutely.
And I'm hoping this is a start, a path, where we lead to a bigger and better thing. It'll take money, and it'll take time, so it'll also take patience. Of course, you know, Sally, 29 years ain't a long time to have the fair in the county like that, so I hope it's a lot longer than that, Sally. But I am glad it has been here all your life, and mine too. And so with that, we will start with a master plan that we have set aside money for in this budget coming year, and we will go about seeing what and how we can enhance and make that a facility that all of us can be proud of. Right now, it's not exactly what I'd want, so hopefully, it'll become something that we all cherish. Thank y'all. Thank y'all so much.
Ms. Williams, Mayor, and the rest of you. I did get a phone call about Fairgrounds, young man telling me about how much he thought the Fairgrounds ought to stay where it's at. I said, "Son, I was in the Fairgrounds before you were born," so don't tell me that. I know more about it than you do, so there's not one of you up there probably has been around as long as I have. But I was there when I was just a kid, four-year-old. So yeah, it means a lot to me, really does.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for coming, and I agree with all the comments you made. Definitely historical, traditional, mutual investment on behalf of the citizens, so I think our board has moved forward with you guys to work out a master plan, communication with all the involved... Duck's been involved with it, all the involved people in the county to come together and work towards a master plan for that entire process. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Once again, we very much appreciate your formal resolution and the time that you've taken out of your schedules to appear this evening as a full-throated demonstration of the commitment of the town of Troutman to move forward collaboratively to establish a vision, how we meet the function of a fair for our agricultural community, and how we expand beyond just a few events, but to a signature kind of facility that can be year-round and can be multiple different types of venues, and we just have an opportunity here to involve a number of different stakeholders, and we appreciate you stepping forward to be the first committed stakeholder in that process. And as we move forward, people, we're going to expand that circle, not just governmental stakeholders and property owner stakeholders, but other nonprofits and citizens that want to be around the table and have input on what this needs to look like for the benefit of our citizens. So appreciate the time that's gone in. This is the first few steps on a long journey, but if you've looked at the condition of the buildings, or even one having been blown down this last couple months ago, it's pretty clear that they've rung the last little bit of use out of these facilities, which started out being a prison camp. And it's time to move into the 21st century. Our farmers are moving in... have moved into the 21st century, and we all, you know, I think owe it to them to have a world-class type facility here to reflect the important economic contribution that our farmers make, and number one in dairy in the state, or you can quote the statistics, Jeff, but right up there in virtually every category. So we need to not only service that part of our economy, but expand throughout the year. So obviously, everything's sort of on the table, and you've made very clear that this is where you'd like it to stay, and that you're committed to be shoulder-to-shoulder with us, and that makes a big difference. So thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thanks very much.
And thank you, Mr. Wyatt, for your engagement. We'll now move on to a presentation of the 2018 Iredell County Child Fatality Annual Data Report by the County Child Fatality Prevention Team.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Laura Johnson. I work at the Health Department, and I have been the chair of the Child Fatality and Prevention Team for about a year and a half now. In becoming the chair, I received training, and in that training, I realized that we were not doing what we needed to do as a local committee, as a local task force, especially related to the children of Iredell County. So I got with my team, and we did an in-service training with the state consultant, and we have been doing some activities, but I realized that we're supposed to be doing an annual report to the county commissioners and then to the Board of Health, because the Board of Health receives the funding for this program in the event that we want to do any outreach activities and work toward hopefully preventing some type of injury with these children. So the information that you're seeing today, granted, we're in 2019, you always review the prior year children deaths, so the information you have is on the children deaths that we reviewed from 2017. Typically, you go through each child death, and you have the community agencies that are represented on this team. You actually have a list of current members that are attending, and they bring information from their agencies if they were involved, and all with that family before, during, or even after the child's death. And then we work on those deaths throughout the year, and we see what is a common factor. And in 2017, we determined that a lot of the... or I say a lot of them, a majority of those deaths were related to lack of prenatal care, which resulted in a perinatal condition. And so we took the funding, and we worked on preconception and prenatal information kits, and the Health Department's own public development and health promotion team worked to design and get together these little kits that we put in all the private OB providers, as well as the pediatric offices, as well as our own clinics in the Health Department that deal with families and young children. And so, as you can see, we reviewed 32 deaths that occurred in 2017 in Iredell County. These are Iredell County resident children, even if they passed away in another county, that information is still given to us to review. The charts and graphs that I provided, it's just a minute summary of what we saw. Those deaths, those nine deaths, were actually had an autopsy, and so that's why I was able to give you that data. I am working with the state consultant to gather the data on the other 23 deaths, and I hope this year, now that I know what I'm looking for, that I can keep a running tally, and hopefully, this information will be more expansive in the years to come. And then activities and accomplishments that we did, like I said, we did the in-service training, and then we worked on increasing the membership. We really tried to reach out and see... tried to see who is state mandated to be on the team, and then who's supposed to appoint them, and move from there. As you all know, I presented to you earlier in the year, and graciously, you appointed five members to this team, and they all attended the first meeting that after they were appointed, and I was very grateful for that. This is the largest membership that we've had in quite a few years, so... And then, of course, we approved the use of the pamphlets and flyers that I spoke of earlier, and then we also have to report back to the state every time we review a death. If we do not have a quorum, or if for some reason, we just didn't have enough information, we can request more information and review at a later date, but we always have to submit reports back saying whether or not we reviewed the deaths or not. And I thank you for your time, and I hope to make this a team that just continues to grow and work to help prevent the injuries that are occurring in Iredell County, such as the one you mentioned today, Chairman Mallory.
Any questions from Commissioners to Ms. Johnson?
If you... thank you for your work on this. If you are able to determine with other sources the causes of death of those other... can you send those to the manager and let her distribute those, or a clerk?
Yes, I will, thank... because the Board of Health had also asked for the same information, so I am working on that.
Thank you. I want to congratulate you on energizing the committee and really refocusing it, and the... this is a great example of a local committee, which, you know, there's so many that are mandated by legislation, but you've really dug in and made a difference, and the focus of a local committee is to figure out local solutions.
Exactly.
To address local trends.
Exactly.
And if you leave it to someone to analyze the data in Raleigh or in Washington, you'll just never get the results that really hone in on what our issues are. So thank you very much for your time in organizing and leading this committee, and the... by extension, please pass on our appreciation and thanks to the membership of the committee.
I will.
I know this, you know, it's a difficult thing to have to review these kind of cases.
Yes, it is, sir.
Because it's emotional and sometimes, you know, traumatic kind of issues that you have to delve into.
Right.
I'd just like to say thank y'all, so I always think it's a good gauge of a society or a nation, country, how they care for their elderly and their infant. And this just goes to show that we are very concerned in the health of the citizens of Iredell County, even the ones that can't really take care of theirself.
Right.
And with what transpired on our state level with the talk of the abortion and allow a child to expire, this really, to me, brings home what we value in Iredell County, and that's the health and the life of a child, always.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. And now move on to item 5.3, which is a presentation of the State of the County Health Report by the Health Department.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you guys for letting me come speak to you. All right, so tonight, I'm going to share with you the 2019 community... All right, so tonight, I'm going to share with you the 2019 Community, or State of the County Health Report. This document is an annual document that details our current health status, emerging issues, and various projects that we've accomplished over the past year, and you should have gotten a copy of it already. On page one of the document, you'll find updated demographic information, and you'll learn a little bit about the social determinants of health. The social determinants of health are conditions in which people are born, grow, and live, and they're shaped by the distribution of different resources. Social determinants are the underlying causes of many of the complex health issues that we aim to address today. As you can see on page three, the leading cause of death in Aridale County have remained the same for the past five years, with the top leading cause of death being cancer, which is further broken down at the bottom of that page. Respiratory and digestive cancers are still the most prevalent, and they make up more than half of all cancer deaths, but they're slightly decreased since our last assessment last year. So, in the last year, there's been a decrease. On page four, you'll find data related to infant and child health. While the overall infant mortality rate in Aridale County increased from 5.8 to 9.7, the African-American infant mortality rate is 19 per 100,000, where it was 32 out of 100,000 five years ago. Teen pregnancies have been at a constant decrease for the last few years, and there were improvements made in regards to the educational attainment of mothers, breastfeeding rates, and the percentage of mothers who smoke while pregnant. The leading cause of death among children is birth defects and perinatal conditions, as you heard Laura just say a minute ago, but there's been a slight improvement when it relates to vehicle injuries and SIDS since the last assessment. Then, if you turn to the next page, you'll see that the health priorities that we selected during our 2015 Community Health Assessment Process were chronic disease, healthy eating, and active living, and risky behavior. Information related to the progress can be found on the next few pages, so pages five through eight. Chronic disease rates have been on a steady decline over the last several years, as you can see on the top of that page. To address colorectal cancer specifically, we worked with Aridale Health System to host an educational lunch and learn. And during this lunch and learn, we had almost 40 participants. They received a lunch that was provided from the hospital, and they got to talk with a physician, a social worker, and a representative of a support group, and they learned about how to get screened, how to prevent colorectal cancer, and what to do if you or a family member are diagnosed, and different resources in the community that are available. We also partnered with the Aridale County Government Employee Wellness Program, and at our annual health fair, we were able to screen 165 of our county employees for colorectal cancer using an at-home screening test. And we talked to 400 of them using an on-paper screening to just kind of assess their risk. So, we were able to touch every employee that came to the health fair with colorectal cancer information. Data related to healthy eating and physical activity is staggering. While there have been improvement in regards to the residents getting the fruits and vegetables that they require, there was a slight decrease in the amount of residents that feel there are healthy options available in their community, and those that get regular physical activity. This year, our Share the Harvest program brought in 18,500 pounds of fresh produce for residents in need. So, that's all produce that came from local farmers in Aridale County and was distributed to Aridale County citizens in need. So, it's a really great program. And we, our Get Fit Aridale program offers free-of-charge fitness events. We now have over 30 agencies that are represented on that group. We had an event that had, it was Pick Your Fun Day at Lake Norman State Park. We offered yoga, taekwondo, walking trails, and nature hikes, and we had 48 people attend that. And then, as a whole, for all of our Get Fit Aridale events, we've had about 1,500 participants so far. Next, you'll see that both the percentage of residents who use tobacco products and those who are exposed to secondhand smoke have decreased over the last five years. The Aridale County Health Department, we've worked heavily with the Statesville and the Mooresville Housing Authorities. While they adopted smoke-free housing policies, we offered them educational classes, we held meetings with their residents and their, their little community managers, and we provided them with cessation classes that were free of cost to any of their residents that wanted to participate. We were able to reach 245 youth-age individuals with risky behavior prevention classes, and we partnered with Aridale Statesville Schools to provide training to all health and PE teachers with the Project Alert program, and that's our leadership-based substance-use prevention program. And with that, we estimated it was 28 teachers in attendance, and this school year that we're currently just finished, they were able to reach, I believe it was 295, almost 300 students with that curriculum. So, that was a really great thing. A new initiative that we're excited about is our Safe Kids Coalition, and it's a project that's going to address child safety topics across the county and bring together different community agencies to build a plan to improve the health and safety of Aridale County children. And like Ms. Johnson was saying earlier, this is going to be an arm off of that. Our, Caroline, who is our youth educator, and she is part of the task force, she is heading this up, so it's going to be the boots on the ground, how we're hopefully going to make the work that they're finding, how we hopefully make it happen and work together. The things that we're going to hopefully focus on are safe sleeping, vehicle safety, and drowning. Those were some of the top deaths over the last few years that trended. An emerging issue worth noting is the increase in electronic cigarette use among the youth population, specifically with the brand Juul. You've probably heard of Juuling. These products are like USB drives, and they become more and more widely available to children. Fun fact, Juul, the brand, owns about 68% of the market share right now, and that is growing every day. I would think two years ago, it was at around 40-some percent. So, they are the biggest growing company. They're marketing everything. It's tailored toward youth, so it's, it's just really dangerous. These products contain harmful substances like heavy metals and cancer-causing chemicals, and we're working with our regional consultant on a plan to work on this and address it. Currently, the Aridale County Health Department is working on our 2019 Community Health Assessment. And during this process, we have a survey, and we use the survey to learn about different areas of weakness related to health and wellness in our community. It will be what we build our next State of the County Health Reports on, and it's important that we get as many responses as possible. And the survey can be found on the Aridale County Health Department website, right on the homepage, or on our Facebook page. So, we'd like to encourage any of you to take the survey if you get a chance. We have it available in English and Spanish, electronic and hard copy. If you'd like a hard copy, it can be found at your Troutman Public Library, Harmony Library, and Statesville Library, and at both of our Health Department sites in Mooresville and Statesville. So, thank you guys for letting me talk about that tonight, and if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a couple. I'm glad to see your emerging issues about the vaping, but I'd like to ask you to, if you could, on your new initiatives, consider working with the schools. This is a very serious issue in our high schools and in some middle schools, too, actually. But I think that's more of a problem than people realize.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'd like to ask you to really push that issue and coordinate with the schools, because it is eventually going to negatively impact our systems and our county a lot more than it has already.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Definitely. We'll definitely work on that.
Any other comments?
Just like to say thank you all, once again, for compiling all the information for us. It's always enlightening to see where we are as far as the county, and if we're improving or not improving.
Thank you. And thank you for allowing us to work on this. I appreciate it.
Megan, I just have a few questions for you. When you look at these infant birth outcomes, and you're looking at infant death rates, effectively, among the African-American population, it dropped roughly 40%.
Mm-hmm.
The converse was true with, well, the white infant death rate went from 1.7 to 9.2. That's a huge increase.
Yes.
And given the population percentages, that's what's driven this increase overall from 5.8 to 9.7, as well as the Hispanic increase from virtually zero to 4.7. So, and you look at the causes of child deaths, and the, you know, 50% of them are birth defects or perinatal conditions. So, this is over a difference between, over five years, from 2012 to 2017.
Yeah.
So, what is the reason for that? Is it, is it young mothers, an opioid crisis? Is, is opioid epidemic related to this?
That is a great question, and we're looking into this. I know that with, with one of our clinics in the clinical services, we're bringing in medication-assisted therapy to help with our clinic, so I've been working on gathering data for that. And it was actually just today that I brought up that number, but there was one infant brought up. We use NC Detect. That's where we get emergency room data, and there was one infant brought in to the emergency department in 2018 for substance use, what was it, Substance Use Withdrawal Syndrome. And so, I did look at that today, and those numbers are so hard to get without actually, like, going through the hospital data and getting that. So, we did reach out to them and hopefully get that, but I think it's a multitude of issues. I think it's a lot of different things. As far as the data set as a whole, it's hard, because when you, you know, when you look at it, rate per 100,000, we have to break it down, and even though when you actually break it down, um, is Laura still here? Do you know how many deaths there were? There's not a, there's not, I mean, there's not 400,000 deaths or anything. It's like, probably like 40 a year. How many total? Yeah.
Fourteen?
Yeah. Like, round about.
Yeah, I'd say not more than 40.
So, there's, there's not more than 40, but still, that's 40 lives. Those are 40 cases where, incidentally, with each one, what was the root cause? What was this? And I think that a lot of it goes back to the social determinants of health, where they live, did they have access to prenatal care, the environment they grew up, was the, was the mother exposed to smoke, like you said, alcohol, drugs, things like that. I think it's so many issues, and that's where, like, when you look at it and you see that, you know, there was a 40% jump, even though that, when you, the true data set, that's only a difference of about three lives, it's still huge.
It just seems to me that if, if you look across, you know, just what's happened in the last five, five years, the big difference is this opioid.
Yeah.
Epidemic. And unlike, you know, tobacco use or alcohol use, whatever, where if you educate people, then they can become receptive to changing behaviors.
Yeah.
Well, if you're an addict, opioid, you're not interested in changing behaviors.
Yeah.
You're not persuadable about, you know, you just can't connect as effectively with them. So, I mean, we got to have some strategy to do that, so that, you know, in conjunction with the Department of Social Services and the Guardian at Lydum's and the, and the court system, that children at risk, whether it's prenatal or whether it's postnatal, and just in an environment where, how many times have you seen pictures of kids in the back, back seat where people have found them, and the parents are in the front seat, you know, passed out? You know, they're, they're not interested in many respects of changing and altering their behaviors.
Mm-hmm.
So, I think the system, we ought to look at alternatives like, you know, well, being a little more aggressive and intentional about removing children from those environments and getting them into a stable environment until parents can address those underlying addiction issues and then make, you know, rational decisions. Because right now, they're just not even paying attention to the issue.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Oh, yeah. And making sure that the parents have the resources that they need to recover from this, because, you know, opioid epidemic, it's a disease. It, it needs recovery.
Well, you know, we, we've had a system that's been focused on family reunification, family integrity for many years, but that's always, you know, it's one thing to learn how to clean up your home and just take care of some neglect-type issues, but when someone, that's just not their focus. If their focus is feeding this habit, then by the time the system, as it works today, actually produces a result, the child's been in it three or four years and has gone through incalculable harm relative to their developmental status.
Yeah.
So, you know, it just seems to me that as a community of multiple stakeholders, that everybody needs to start getting on the same page of music and addressing this kind of subset out here that's.
Yeah.
A hard nut to crack, but if you're going to wait for all the parents to get their act together, we're going to have another generation of children that have been caught in a cycle that they aren't going to be able to break out of.
Exactly.
The other question I had quickly is on the, on the vaping and Juuling and all that.
Yeah.
It's my understanding that, you know, you go into a restaurant, you have a non-smoking section, or you can't smoke at all in a restaurant.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that doesn't apply for vaping. Is that correct?
That is actually correct. The law that was adopted in 2009 that was for bars and restaurants does not encompass electronic cigarettes.
Okay, so, what you're saying is that the, when the vapor that's expelled, because you see, you know, these clouds of stuff get expelled, has all these harmful elements that you've outlined.
Yeah.
So, there's a secondhand exposure to it. So, what's going on in the legislature to address that? Do you know?
Um, actually.
Or DHHS?
So, as far as legislature, I attended a regional meeting a couple of months back, or actually, a month back, and we were actually talking about this exact same thing, how we were so progressive 10 years ago, we got this, it was great, and now, we have one that doesn't even encompass a majority of what people are using. And from what we're hearing is they're, everyone's scared to take it back up, you know, to be modified, because you run the risk of, you have lobbyists that are, you know, for these, these companies, and they're going to put all their resources toward fighting this, and you run the risk of losing what we have. So, it's, you know, do you ruin a good thing to try to fight this other? And so, I think that it's where it's going to be a lot of grassroots, local municipalities banning it themselves. We actually, in neighboring county, Gaston County, they've adopted the most progressive tobacco laws in the state. It's actually an ordinance and a Board of Health rule, and it's no tobacco-free public places, which encompass restaurants. So, they actually took the step to go that way. And so, that, I think it's going to take a lot of grassroots efforts from local municipalities and governments, and maybe we could work on that.
Well, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? I can appreciate the hard work that goes into compiling all this data, and then, and I know that our Health Department staff, you know, will look for ways and consistently looks for ways to, okay, how do we address the underlying issues? So, but we do need, like I said, I think, we, we've got costs that are involved in this opioid epidemic. We're a part of a lawsuit against the pharmaceutical companies and the distributors that have created this problem, and part of that is, you know, what are the damages that are sustained by communities insofar as reacting or dealing with this issue? So, we need to also try to capture the, the costs to our county and municipalities and schools and healthcare systems for dealing with.
Definitely.
All of these second and third order issues. So, thank you very much.
Chairman, the manager reminded me also that our county policy does include electronic devices for county property.
So, we're ahead of the game, but.
Our, our smoke-free policy does include electronic cigarettes. They're not allowed on county property.
But you can carry concealed weapons, just remember that. We, that's for protection of our county employees and our citizens.
Mr. Chairman, does our colleagues need to leave? They have, they attend enough meetings. It would not offend us or anyone else if you guys, I know you're busy, so.
I, I, yes, certainly, and it, most of the time, when folks are through, they, they pop smoke and hit the door, but.
Please feel free.
We certainly enjoy your presence.
We enjoy you being here, but.
We know the chairs are comfortable. They'll lure you to sleep. We know that.
Have me our next presentation chairs.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. Thank you for coming anyway.
They wanted to hear you talk. Why y'all come and rush?
Okay, that's right.
Okay, I was trying to save them for that.
That's why we're here, too. That's why we're here, too, waiting on you, Doug, to hear you talk.
Okay. I will now go on to our first public hearing in consideration of an economic development incentive for Project Doughnut. And Mr. Chris Younger is going to present the details.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank you and this board for allowing us to present before, before you this evening. The Aridale County Economic Development is proud to announce Project Doughnut's prospective plans to locate their new facility in Statesville, North Carolina. The name of the company and their project details cannot be fully disclosed at this time, but we will disclose more information at a later date when we do announce their name. The new facility would be 42,000. The new facility would be 42,000 square feet and located at the Carolinas Interstate Corporate Park. This project anticipates creating 20 new full-time positions, generate $6.8 million in new tax investment over the next five years. And according to the Iredell County Industrial Development Incentive Program, we are requesting a tax grant-back incentive be granted to Project Doughnut for five years totaling up to $131,600, which averages to approximately $26,320 per year. On behalf of the Iredell County Economic Development, I want to thank you for your consideration in this matter and answer any questions you may have.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Younger? None. I'll open the public hearing. I note that no one has specifically signed up to be heard, so I would inquire of anyone that is present if they would like to be heard. Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve an economic incentive up to $131,600 over a five-year period based on the company's investment of $6.8 million contingent upon a contract being executed within 180 days for Project Doughnut.
Motion by Commissioner McNeely. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you to this board.
And thank you, Mr. Younger, for your effective representation of the county writ large in all of these economic development competitions.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Now we have a public hearing to consider a request by David Hughes with Nest Communities to release zoning and subdivision jurisdiction of 8.9 acres on Brawley School Road to the town of Mooresville. And Mr. Matthew Todd will tee that up.
Good evening to the board. The request we have opposed tonight is an ETJ release for zoning and subdivision jurisdiction to the town of Mooresville. Properties outlined in blue on the screen, there's three different parcels. You can tell it's currently surrounded, for the most part, by City of Mooresville jurisdiction already, with some commercial property next to it on Brawley School Road, essentially at the corner with Forest Lake Boulevard. They have filed for voluntary annexation with the town of Mooresville, which would be December of this year. And I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding this request.
Any questions from the board for Mr. Todd? Hearing none. I'll now open the public hearing. And we do have two folks that have signed up this evening. First is Mr. Jimmy McKnight. And if you'd please, for the record, announce your name and residential address.
My name's Jimmy McKnight. I'm the owner of RealCo Investment Properties in Mooresville. I live at 166 Lakeview Shores Loop in Mooresville, right down the street from the property that's in question.
Okay.
And I don't really have a presentation, but I'm here to, I have with me David, David Hughes, who is with Nest Homes, and don't really have any comments to make, but I'd be glad to answer any questions y'all may have.
I want to inquire of any commissioners if they have any questions. And Mr. McKnight? We had an opportunity to review this last, two weeks ago when we called for the public hearing. And so I don't think we had any further questions.
Thank you very much.
And of course, this is pending annexation to the town of Mooresville, which is one of the things we've requested, is that this go hand in glove with an annexation request.
That's correct.
Obviously Mooresville's zoning will apply and all of those restrictions, which are more restrictive than the county.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir, that's correct.
So Mr. Hughes, do you want to be heard? You're good to go? Okay. I'd ask if anyone else that's present would like to be heard, missed signing up. Seeing or hearing none, close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make that motion to approve the request for release of zoning and subdivision jurisdiction to the town of Mooresville by David Hughes.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Norman. Any further comment? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. McKnight and Mr. Hughes. And good luck. And that concludes our public hearings for the evening. We now move on to administrative matters that are appropriate for consideration on our consent agenda. We had one matter that we held out for a presentation by the Register of Deeds, Mr. Ron Wyatt. So that's item 8.1, which is a request for a revenue stamp refund.
Thank you, gentlemen. As we have discussed before, North Carolina general statutes dictate that when there's an error made by the attorneys, once they file a deed in our office and once it pertains to excise tax, I do not have the luxury as the register to give a refund, even though they can prove that a refund is due. I have to come before you as the county commissioners and make such requests. Back on May 20th, a local law firm filed a deed in our office, I believe you have copies in your packets stating that the purchase price of a property was $685,000. Excise tax due was $1,370. It was appropriately collected. The problem was that sales price on that property was actually $132,000, and the excise tax owed was only $264. They caught the error two days later, and they are simply requesting a refund.
So it was just actually a complete incorrect purchase price listing and wasn't necessarily an arithmetically challenged attorney?
Yes, sir, Chairman Mallory, that's correct. Normally, I won't say normally, more times than not, the sales price is actually not recorded on the deed, just the excise tax amount, and that is the normal error. In this situation, absolutely correct. The, the sales price was incorrect by their firm, and then that caused the error in the excise tax tabulation.
Well, I'm sure our tax assessor is disappointed. They were probably looking forward to that assessment.
Yes, sir.
Anyway. Any further questions for Mr. Wyatt? Is there a motion to approve this request?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve this refund request.
Motion by Commissioner McNeely. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimously. A big win.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wyatt. Okay, we'll now move on to the balance of the administrative calendar, which we heard at our pre-agenda meeting, which consists of a lot of typically, I won't say arcane, I'll say complicated or bookkeeping, housekeeping kind of actions.
Boring, it's boring.
Some of which, however, are, you know, significant contractual awards. But that, those items are heard at 5:00 in this room. Anyone in the public is encouraged and invited to attend. So at this time, Ms. Jones, if you would please summarize those items appropriate for our consent agenda.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chairman Mallory. The first item was a request from Solid Waste for approval to award the formerly bid contract and construct Phase 6 of the landfill, which includes cells 1 and 2, with the accompanying Budget Amendment Number 41 in the amount of $7,848,626 as a base bid, plus $392,431,030 for contingency. This is, this base bid is awarded to D.H. Griffin Infrastructure and then to adopt the capital project ordinance. There was a request from ICATS for approval of a multi-year agreement for mobile radio service and support of Mobile Communications of America for a total annual cost of $21,466.60, and this is a two-year contract. A request from Planning and Development for approval of the MAP Review Officers List. A request from Planning and Development for approval of appointment of representatives to the 2020 Census Complete Count Committee. And there was an agreement to place this on the announcement of vacancies and boards with the appointment mechanism of three individuals per commissioner for a total of 15 members. A request from Tax Administration for denial of taxpayer requests for refund that does not meet the statutory requirement. A request from Tax Administration for approval of May refunds and releases. A request from the Finance Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 39 in the amount of $205,000 to appropriate investment earnings for the first debt payment of the vehicle financing. A request from Facility Services Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 40 in the amount of $32,000 to transfer funds allocated in capital improvement plan to the Facility Improvement Fund for drainage repairs at the government center complex, which is this building. A request from Administration for approval of a resolution authorizing the exchange of property on Bristol Drive and to authorize the county manager to request the Bank of America to release this tract from the current deed of trust. A request from Administration for approval of a utility easement at the jail construction site to the city of Statesville for maintenance of the decorative streetlights that had to be added as part of that project. And finally, a request from the Clerk to the Board for approval of minutes for the meeting on June the 4th, 2019.
All right, is there a motion to approve the agenda items on the administrative docket for, that were recommended as a consent?
Motion to approve the administrative agenda, Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Norman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimously. And we move on to item 9, which is announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. We have one announcement for the Mooresville Planning Board. This is in the ETJ, where the county points one individual to sit on their board to represent county citizens who are not in the incorporated limits of the town of Mooresville, but are within their extraterritorial jurisdiction. We also have, as Ms. Jones mentioned, the appointment of 15 representatives to the 2020 Census Complete Count Committee. For both of these announcements, we would encourage folks to, that are interested, to consult the county website and to fill out an application and submit that. And we hope that we will have, by the time we meet in July, we will have, it will be four weeks before we meet on the, what's the date?
The 16th, July the 16th.
16th of July. Hopefully by then, we will have enough applicants to be able to fill those positions. Appointments to boards and commissions, item 10. If, we have a number of them. We've consolidated most of these on a, on a six-month cyclical basis so that they're not just popping up periodically. So we've got several boards and commissions to review this evening. And I'd ask Ms. Jones to go ahead and lay those out.
Thank you, Chairman Mallory. Just as a reminder, this board has agreed by consensus that if there is an individual that is willing to be reappointed, that experience does matter in this situation. So when I go through those, I will certainly note those individuals that are being reappointed. Animal grievance, there are three appointments. Lori Root has volunteered to serve again. And then Justin Benfield and Jason Binge has volunteered to serve for the first time. Carolina Workforce Development Board, one appointment. Brenda Spees has volunteered to serve again. Farmland Preservation Advisory Board, one appointment. Andrew Sherrill has volunteered to serve again. Icare Board of Directors, two appointments. Yvette Smith and Melissa White have volunteered to serve again. Jury Commission, one appointment. Irene Blackburn has volunteered to serve again. Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, one appointment. One appointment, Jim Nixon has volunteered to serve again. As a side note, Seth Gardner has volunteered to serve as the Parks and Recreation Representative, and they are asking for the board to approve that. It's not required, but they're asking for the board's blessing on that as well. Planning Board, three appointments. Kristy Pfeifer, Mark Davis, and Robert Palms have all volunteered to serve again. Statesville Board of Adjustment, one appointment. Craig Morrow has volunteered to serve again. Troutman Board of Adjustment, one appointment. And Helen Byers has volunteered to serve again, and the board has recommended that. Troutman Planning Board, two appointments. Barry General and Randy Farmer have agreed to be reappointed, and the board has recommended those individuals as well. We did have one board, which is the Mitchell Community College Board of Trustees, that we had one appointment and two new individuals that have submitted their names for consideration. And those two individuals are Betsy Yarborough and Kevin Donaldson for the Mitchell Community College Board of Trustees.
Is there any discussion of the folks that have been recommended? I believe that for those, that there, there's not a reappointment or there are multiple candidates, such as the Mitchell College Board of Trustees, that we would defer action on those until the July meeting. Give us a more time to review their applications. So is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion we approve all the nominees for the boards and commissions and table the Mitchell College until July the 16th.
Motion by Commissioner Hough. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimously. Move on to item 11, which is unfinished business. I'm not aware of any. Anyone on the commission? No. This is a public comment period. And we have one individual that has indicated an interest to be heard. That's, is it Tamerly? Well, if you would please, Ms. Lee, just approach the podium and state your name and address for the record.
I think, can you hear me? Yes. My name is Norma Lee, and I live just outside Troutman. And why am I here? Well, I represent Troutman Garden Club. And I am here to stand up for Troutman. Now, you've heard quite a nice presentation from the council, and they are all for it, to keep the fairgrounds in Troutman and bring them up to standard for the comfort of the exhibitors and visitors. The facilities need complete refurbishment, better parking. The conditions are terrible. The exhibition halls, especially the storeroom that they turn in annually into an exhibition hall for garden clubs, 4H, and that's the kids, handicrafts, flowers, crafts, and cakes. And it's behind the new toilets, and that's our address. It's dark, and it's hot, and it's hard to put flowers in and keep them for the full nine days with the heat. This year is the 84th year of the county fair. Many Troutman residents and visitors have been coming to Troutman all their lives, as we've already heard. They're bringing revenue, other exhibitions, horse fairs, and we could do much more with it for the community. The fairground is Troutman. We are not Mooresville. We're not Statesville. Troutman is small-town America. Without the fairground, it's just a street. The commissioners have said they need convincing that the residents want our fairground. If it is taken away, oh, sorry, it is taken for granted. And you would soon know if it was taken away that they want it. And that's what happens when things disappear. Why do visitors come to Troutman? Because it is a unique small-town America. Why is it so popular? Because of the fairground. And thank you for your encouraging comments. And thank you for your encouraging comments and your interest. And I'm giving this little omelette for the other side, and that is the people who actually come and exhibit in the fairground. And I've been doing that for the last 10 years in the garden club. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. We appreciate your taking the time to share your heartfelt affection for the fair, and I think this board, in our discussions, has recognized that we need to up our game. We need to bring the fair into the 21st century. It needs to reflect, you know, the best of our communities. And so, as a start to that process, you know, obviously, you can look anywhere in Iredle County, and having heard from the town fathers and mayor of Troutman getting their official desire to retain the fair, and hearing from constituents that that's in line with their desires, that's very helpful to us. But we will go through a process of determining what the vision is, and then, once figuring out the vision and what all the different stakeholders can bring to the table, we'll have to figure out how to resource it and then make it happen.
Gotcha.
Because, you know, the buildings aren't rehabable, they're just bulldozable. And we'll have, but we need to have, before we start doing anything piecemeal, we need to have a master plan.
Yes.
And a master vision that everyone can be truly excited about, and as Commissioner McNeeley has mentioned, be a year-round event type of venue for multiple different user groups.
True. Thank you very much. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And we will now move on. Anyone else like to be heard during the public comment period? Raymond, you're about the only person left here. Okay. Okay. Make that, make sure that got into the record. Okay. We'll now move on to a new business. We have a budget amendment.
Yes, we do have an amended budget ordinance, and Deb Cheek is going to be presenting that to the board.
Thank you, gentlemen. I put beside each of your places a packet. The top item in that packet is an amended budget ordinance. I've also provided a new CIP paper for you. I have provided new school funding worksheet for you, and at the very back are the budget schedules that have been updated for the change that I'm bringing to you tonight. Yesterday, it came to my attention that there had been an error made on my school funding worksheet, and that error had to do with valuation update. I went back into that worksheet and figured what the school funding needed to be, and the majority of the correction that I'm bringing to you tonight is in the debt reserve line, the money that we put back of the four and a quarter cent to pay for debt and then for future capital items. On your amended ordinance on page one, the change is school funding has been reduced by $3,172,643, and capital improvement fund has been increased by corresponding $3,172,643. Also, there is an adjustment to the Iredle-Statesville schools and to Mooresville Graded School District. Iredle-Statesville schools will receive $429,428 more in capital funding. Mooresville Graded School will receive a small decrease of $115,022. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have for me.
So the upshot is there's no decrease other than the 115 that you're suggesting to either, to ISS?
No.
That it's additional funds that are available for them?
There's additional funds to ISS, and there's a decrease of funds to Mooresville Graded.
And this is not current expense, this is capital.
Capital.
So I just want to make that clear, that this is part of the capital outlay funds, not current expense.
You know, they've already been given their budget numbers. I don't know how the other commissioners would like to approach this, but given that we have additional dollars that we're putting in our own capital improvement program as a result of this, that we make whole Mooresville and that we not decrement them, not increase them, but not decrement them in terms of their budget. And we make corresponding change in our CIP number.
What's your problem with that?
I think at this time in the game, personally, I think it would be unfair, maybe. I don't know if that's the best word, but that's the word that comes to mind, considering that we had more input for their monies into our safety and security fund. I think it'd be only fair that we uphold our end of this bargain.
Additional comments?
Is there?
You can speak in Mooresville only.
That's correct.
Okay.
All right. Okay, is there a motion to adopt the budget, the budget ordinance amendment?
With the amendment that you, that you just made with Mooresville Graded making them whole?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Norman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cheek. Okay, we now move on to the next item of new business, is a report by Commissioner McNeeley.
Just a couple of things. One, I did go and have a, a meeting with our reassurer as far as our, with the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. We had our meeting on loss adjustment, and it was very interesting. The, the association is doing well, and because of that, we will see a very good number give to us for our workman's comp and our P&L, our property liabilities and whatnot. So everything looks well on that front. Actually, we've been a member for a long time, and we will continue to see our numbers go down as far as our costs at the projections we have now, because there's longevity for every year you're in the pool. And so the risk pool is paying people back for their, for their loyalty, and so that's good. On another note, from what we've seen in the paper here lately, our representative, Rena Turner, is going to step down in the middle of her tenure this time, and I would just like to inform the board and I guess the public and all that I am entering my name as one of the possible replacements for her. And so just letting everybody realize that that's there, and you may send me right back here again. I don't know what the future holds, but I just thought it was something that I needed to bring forth to y'all to let you know.
Thank you, Commissioner McNeeley. We note that Representative Turner has had a, a career of public service, starting as a public school teacher, subsequently running for, and, and winning elective office to the, as clerk of Superior Court, and then later on, moving on to represent the 84th District in the House of Representatives, and represented North Iredle and large portions of Statesville very, very well. And so we understand her desire to be a grandmother full-time and not spend as much time away from the children, and this will set up an opportunity for the Republican Party Executive Committee by statute to vote and to appoint someone to her seat that will serve until the general election. And we're, I, for one, am very, you know, conflicted to, to think about losing our fashion trendsetter, but have a warm and fuzzy feeling about the knowledge that if selected, we have a representative who will have a deep background in local government issues, having worked with the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners and the CRTPO Transportation Committee that will provide some, I think, unique and very beneficial insights for Iredle County in terms of representation in Raleigh. So we'll stand by and wait to hear what news is coming, see if there's a puff of white smoke or whatever it is. And it's my understanding that Representative Turner's resignation is effective 27 June.
Yes.
And that the, the Republican Executive Committee will have met prior to that, and it's still in the middle, just the closing, waning week or two of the, the budget until I suspect the legislature has to come back in the fall.
Yeah. And there may be a, a budget override vote that has to happen, so that's why time is of the essence, and, and I, I don't know who will fill our shoes. I assume they're size 18s because there's going to be some pretty big shoes to fill. And if it's me, I'll try to do my best for Iredle County. I just won't do it in heels. It'll be flats.
Well, you know, we, nobody can see underneath that table.
This is true. It's true.
But.
Have had flip-flops before.
So, and I would note for the record that it would appear that maybe as a birthday present, you got a new pair of spectacles.
Well, possibly.
Yeah.
Possibly. All the better to see you with.
Well, they're very.
This is a big bad wolf's head.
Well, we did go into closed session and had a matter of economic development discussed and a few items to report out. So I would ask if there's some motions to be recorded for the record.
Yes, sir. And as I try on these glasses to get them to work. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a couple of motions if I could. First, I'd like to make a motion to call for a public hearing on July the 16th, 2019 at 7:00 PM regarding a maximum economic development incentive of $115,000 over a five-year period for Project Blacktop based on a $5.8 million investment in Iredle County.
Motion by Commissioner McNeeley. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to make a motion to call for a public hearing on July 16th, 2019 at 7:00 PM regarding a maximum economic development incentive of $52,000 over a five-year period for Project R based on a $2,635,000 investment in Iredle County.
Motion by Commissioner McNeeley. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimously.
And maybe quite possibly one of the last motions I make here, maybe not, but I make a motion to call for a public hearing on July 16th, 2019 at 7:00 PM regarding a maximum economic development incentive of $1,994,000 over a six-year period for Project Motor based on an $84 million investment in Iredle County. Eighty-four million.
Motion by Commissioner McNeeley. Any further discussion? Let me say amen to that one.
Amen.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimously. Is there any further business to come before the commission? Well, I want to personally thank Commissioner McNeeley for the contributions he's made to this commission, and I hope, I know that you're going to continue to serve whether in this seat or whether in a seat in Raleigh. I don't want to be, jump the gun or count the chickens before they hatch.
Yeah, don't be too presumptuous.
Say in public session, and personally, thank you and good luck, Godspeed, and we look forward to working with you in any capacity.
Well, we'll just see what the Lord portends to me. With that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Like sign. We are adjourned.[1761.62]